Is this clipboard look familiar Charlie? No, you can't see it. Forget it. I found it at mock trial.
Oh, okay. Yes, it's one of mine. It's probably what is the score sheet typing? You know, we do scoring in the regional tournament.
I may need it again.
Yeah. Not this year. We're going to be, we're going to be online for the state tournament this year.
Are they going to do it online, the whole thing?
Yeah, this that we just had a state committee meeting yesterday and we're going to do a virtual mock trial service. The issues are going to have one tournament or regionals and the state, so.
They would do the whole state tournament online? That'd be interesting.
Pardon?
They do it online, but your kids would be together. I'm sorry, Jonathan. We'll talk about it later. Sorry.
That's okay.
Are we live?
Charlie, I thought you were retiring from mock trail.
We're waiting for YouTube to get it going.
Mine says live.
Yeah, mine says it's live.
Yeah, I think it worked now. I will.
All right. All right, everybody. Welcome. We have a work session today at 3:30 for the budget 2021. Four different items to talk about, and then we have a joint meeting with the housing commission immediately following. So no further ado, who is going to talk us through the first part of the 2021 budget cemetery trust?
I could probably kick that off. Everybody can hear me. Okay, right?
Yep.
So I think it probably will be easiest if I try to share my screen here and we can kind of work through things. If I can get that to work. Brian is here. He has got, how come I can't get that to work? Hang on. We're going to hear from Brian. He's going to talk a little bit about the cemetery and the conservation trust funds. The bad news is that Gary apparently had other things on his mind. I don't know. So he's not here. I'll try to take you through the fire and EMS thing. We'll plan to have a little bit of time in the next session. Hopefully Gary could be there. So if you've got questions about fire EMS budgets, that kind of stuff. We'll make sure you guys have a chance to get those answered from Gary himself. And then we'll get into the A and I stuff that we should be able to finish up with. Okay, so can everybody see my screen right now? Everybody's good? Okay, so I'll just kind of keep control of this if it sounds good to everybody and I'll scroll down and let Brian kind of take us through the cemetery trust and conservation trust.
Yeah. Good afternoon, council. So in our cemetery trust is it's not a big fund, but directed by code, we bring in about anywhere from a thousand to $2,000 in perpetual care fees that are charged at the time of internment for the plots when we have funeral services. And that goes into a fund balance that we require to keep a reserve for for perpetual care of the cemetery. If you want to go to the next page, Steve. So right now we have 553,896 in their plan for the 2021 budget. And so that's just used for some of the larger equipment. Or if we need to pull additional reserves out, like for instance, when we have to remove a large tree that can be anywhere up to $4,000 to remove that in order to intern a casket into one of the plots where some of the trees that people will come in and plant in past years has overgrown that. So we keep a fun balance to be able to do that. We shifted all of the the funds that we were using for purchasing of intermittent rights and plots and and how we rotate that through our budget into parks from the cemetery trust fund. We did that about two years ago. So that's where those funds live as well as most of our maintenance costs for the cemetery. Pretty simple, really used just as a reserve for ready day for cemetery perpetual care needs. Any questions on that one?
Hey, Brian, a long time ago, the cemetery looked at setting up a, I don't even know what they're called, but a place to inter ashes that people could rent or buy. Is there space at the cemetery to do something like that as I want to say as an income potential, but also as a place that people can memorialize. And I know the more, more, sorry, the mortuary does this, but I'm just wondering if we can offer something like that to the general public. Is there space at the cemetery to do something like that?
Yeah, you know, and we need to bring the conversation back to council since we have quite a few new members on council since we had this discussion about three years ago. So at the time we had proposed a number of options to deal with the cemetery coming to end of service. One of those was a cremation garden, which I think is what you're kind of thinking of. It's, it's a little bit different from a mortuary or a mausoleum or other kind of structure where you would have a, where you would intern cremations. There's a few more options to there. We would be able to to build that onsite of the cemetery and I'll have to, I'll have to dig up all my reports on that when we got those cost estimates and pull that all together. But I'm happy to come back to council and have that discussion, but we, we definitely need to think through some, some creative solutions. At the time council's direction was to go ahead and let the cemetery finish out and of service fill up. We, you know, we have a little over a thousand plots that are owned, but not interred right now. We're going to be a little more active in reaching out to families that have moved away or, or no longer need those. Where this been purchased into the family and the, they're interested in buying that and selling that back to the city. And we'll, we'll actively buy those back. We will be proposing some new fee schedules for both intermittent fees as well as selling of intermittent rights. Right now we're, we're pretty low. That was set in 2016, but we're, we're almost half of what regional fees are. So we're pretty low. I think we can bring those up to fair market value and they'll be given to council with the finalized budget.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Brian, my question, I think you kind of started to go there and you veered off, but in that three thing, the discussion three years ago, and I kind of remember that happened. I think it was actually at the meeting, but I don't remember the details. Are we just talking about looking for more space once we because as I recall, there's no actual lots available for sale because even though you got a thousand aren't used.
Yeah, we, when we did the study and looked at it, we would need about another four acres to get us through the next hundred years. We, we got an indication from council that they would like us to just look at different options of maybe incentivizing local mortuaries. See if there's interest in the private sector to privatize cemetery services. And maybe we could do a land swap with them or something like that. Just looking at a couple of different creative solutions. So that has always been part of the discussion as we've looked at a couple of different things, including the downtown confluence redevelopment and initiatives like that. So.
All right. Any other questions about the budget? All right, conservation trust.
Maybe one last, actually one last thing and we can cover it when we go through general fund. We are upping our our budget to be able to, to buy back plots. But like I said, that's being kept in parks fund. So we'll talk about that when we review that. So cemetery trust, this is a fund that holds a balance from lottery proceeds. And we, we did support that initiative with a letter from council two years ago to, to reauthorize those proceeds for recreational amenities and capital projects and things like that. Right now we have a we have 114, a little over 114,000 that went into the, the fund this year. We expect that to continue to increase by a couple percent each year. We have a balance of 342,672. Steve, if you want to go to the next slide. We'll be bringing in revenue total with interest of 113,200. So that'll give us 455,872. We have already committed 100,000 of that for the Lova Trail project. Those expenditures have not been spent yet for this year, so we'll roll those over into next year. And then we'll also earmark 100,000 of that for park improvements, looking at both the ice ring foundation, the skirting around, the selling of that and the evaporative condenser as well as some improvements for going towards our new parks building. And that streets is helping out us out with. So we're hoping to get some of that work done this year. So $200,000 out of there. And that will give us fund balance of 255,872 left and that we can appropriate as needed as we go along.
Rick.
Allocation, is that just because we're still waiting on design? On the Lova Trail or is there some other reason we didn't spend it in 2020?
I would say we've allocated conservation trust funds to both the middle project that we got the grant for. Both Newcastle on their side of it and us on our side of it just didn't get to it this year. We've been working, we've been working with C dot about what the barriers by the highway need to look like. So I think we're, I think we're both shooting for next year to do our sections of the meet me in the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Shelley.
So had a quick question on the line on this page. It's for 2021 increase or decrease. Eighty six thousand eight hundred. Is that, is that part of the 100,000 that was on that previous page?
No, that's just a net. Right. So that's just showing the delta between fund balance reserves.
Okay, so what is that eighty?
So basically we've got total revenue coming in of 113,200. And we're spending $200,000 as Brian just kind of referred to. So that's the change in this year's fund balance is 86,800, which should be this number right here.
Okay, awesome. All right. I get it now. Thanks.
So the ending balance including after the expenditures of the 200,000 is going to be that 255,872. You see there an ending balance under 2021.
Okay, great.
Paula. Sorry, Paula, did you hear her hand up?
Sorry, I gotta unmute. Um, maybe I just missed it as we kind of went through this really quickly. What's the water park carry for it again?
So
further down.
Yeah, 50,000 and, and that was for the planning of the return on the water park as well as the construction of the parking lot for the, for that for the west side and then the permitting for the in water work to make for maintenance of the wave.
Okay, great. Thank you. I was just trying to call.
Yeah, we, so that was put in. We didn't get to it last year. We rolled that forward and then we put all capital projects on hold again this year. So it's going forward again another year.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Brian. You know, as we go through these just line by line items or individual sections. If anybody has a question that, you know, is, is going to be pertinent, I, what my goal would be is that by the time we get to a final passage of this budget, we all feel good enough about the individual sections that we we feel comfortable voting for the entire budget. So I think, you know, I really want people if, I mean, obviously cemetery and conservation trust is not super you know, contentious, but if there are things that you, you know, I want you to speak up and say, I can't vote for this if I don't understand this. Or I, or maybe this I can't vote for this because I don't agree with this. You know, we get to a final passage. I want to be able to say, listen, we talked about every single one. Every one of us signed off. We all gave a thumbs up and you know, what has changed? And have something, has something changed either with, with us and how we feel about it or with materially with the budget that was is going to be presented versus what we're seeing now. So I guess I kind of just want to do a, you know, a quick thumbs up. Just affirmation that everybody feels good about these two funds, good enough that if nothing else changes in the next couple of months, that we would all feel good voting for these. At least neither one of these two trusts would be something that would preclude us from voting for the final budget. So is everybody okay with these two so far? Okay, I can only see about half of council without scrolling down. So I'm just going to assume that if you don't speak up, you're good.
I will vote on the final budget, Mr. Mayor. I don't understand this like desire to have a seven L on the budget, but I will vote on the final budget.
Well, no, my, my desire is, is that when we get to the final budget, if somebody says, I'm going to vote against it, that everybody is clear why we're voting against it and that we've talked it through. And it's not a question of not understanding or you know, that one meeting in early September, we didn't, you know, get to that or understand that. I just want to make sure that, that us and the public understands why somebody is voting yes or no. Does that make sense?
Makes sense. I will vote on the final budget.
I, I think we are all required to vote on the budget.
Mayor Godis?
Yes.
Possible if there's a particular fund that someone is not in agreement with, that they can just pull that fund out and we vote on that separately?
Um, you know, I, I, yeah, I mean, I think that that's, that's possible. I mean, I think at the end of the day, we have to have a final vote on the final budget, but I think that that is what, I know, I think that'd be great. I think that actually would make a lot of sense to pull out that fund, vote on it, have that vote recognized and then subsequently take a final vote because, you know, there might be something I don't like and I would like to have my voice heard and my vote heard on that particular fund. But it might not rise to the level where I'm going to vote against the entire budget to fund the city and people's salary. You know, that, that's a pretty high bar. So I think that's a great suggestion, Shelley. Okay, moving on. Fire me EMS.
Sounds good. And I think Shelley's suggestion, by the way, is a good one as well. This is an example of, you know, one of the things that we would have to be cautious of if we go that direction is, you know, we sometimes have money that gets transferred from one fund to another, right? So if you vote against one fund, that kind of means you're voting against a transfer that might, you know, inform another fund. So we would just have to be cautious of that. But I, I think that's a good idea. Okay, so we're going to talk about fire EMS here. We'll talk about the revenues and then the expenditures. You guys are going to see that most of the expenditures are personnel. Those are our firemen. There is no cut in fire personnel. We've kept all of our both full time and part time positions in here. We split our marijuana tax money up between the general fund and the fire fund. So this year we've got $100,000 going into fire from marijuana tax. I'll jump down here and say this 780 is from rural fire. That's the rural fire district. They have their own tax. They make a contribution then partly into the fire funded. That's what we're estimating this to be. And then the balance of the revenue in this fund is made up from the general fund. So we make an estimate at the beginning of the year, and this is our estimate about 2.7 million bucks. And then at the end of the year, you know, we'll kind of true that up so that this fund never carries a cash balance. Right? So every year we're going to zero out this balance. And the way we do that is to back into a transfer from the general fund into the fire EMS fund. I mean, this fund would be and really should be part of our general fund, the, but it's different because it's got its own revenue source, its own tax source. So it's got to be its own fund.
And Steve, when you say that it does have zero balance, we're talking about the operational part of the fire department, not the equipment part.
Exactly right. Yep. That we'll get to equipment next, but that's right, Charlie. Okay, so a few bucks in permits and licenses that we expect. We've got $15,000 in this year. Ambulance fees. This one's a tough one. I mean, I know that Gary and Mina and everybody spend a lot of time kind of wrestling with this one. You know, we will give somebody a ride and then we bill them for it and then it can be difficult to collect from them, right? So you'll see a bad debt sort of reserve when we get a little bit further down. The other challenge here is in, you know, Medicare, Medicaid and some other insurance companies that have, you know, caps on what they'll reimburse and what they're fun. So we don't necessarily get paid the entire amount of what we bill. So this year we're forecasting $550,000, you know, sort of net. We think we'll probably get around $800,000 and then end up with, you know, $250,000 or so in adjustments. So we should net out in about $550,000 in ambulance fees. You're going to see though, that that doesn't really cover the entire cost of, of that ambulance service. That makes sense. Okay, just a couple of other things here, some bad debt recovery miscellaneous income that may come in. Then we get here down to our expenses. So these are operating expenses for our fire department. We put in here this $2 million is base salaries for everybody. You'll see that it's the same as it was last year. And the reason for that is there just weren't any changes. This budget and all the, all the budgets that we talked about this year have no cost of living increase for employees in at all. We've kept salaries flat. Kept every position in the budget, but there's, there's no increase. So unless there's been change in, you know, personnel and somebody's left and we've replaced him with somebody else or whatever. This number should be expected to be the same as that number. Okay. And then, you know, supplementing that, we've got, you know, benefits and other things related to those employees. We've got 210,000 in this year for part time. $138,000 for overtime. That one, you know, sometimes hard to predict, but I hopefully will be pretty close there. Health insurance premiums should be pretty good, should be pretty close. We're going to end up taking something like a 3% increase in our health insurance. Which came in a little bit better than I thought. I thought we were going to be more in the four to five range. So we were kind of happy about that. We had talked about what we're going to do with it in the general fund, but our hope is to not you know, give employees a pay cut by forcing them to pay for part of that increase. We'd like to see the city be able to pick up that entire increase. But we can talk more about that next week. So long-term disability, basic life insurance, FPPA, death and disability insurance. FICA, this is social security contributions that we make, retirement. And we've got this police retirement fund that we fund. So all this stuff is really very, very similar to what you saw last year. There really aren't a lot of changes. Same with supplies. This number has gone up, this 71,000 in total supplies has gone up from 10,000 last year. And the reason for that is that we, as you, as everybody knows, well, you know, we're changing our accounting system. So we're changing our chart of accounts and we're accounting for certain expenses that may be in a different line item than they were the year before. But this doesn't mean that, well, we were paying, you know, $10,600 one year for a particular basket of goods. And now that same basket is costing us $71,000. Same kind of thing with maintenance and repair. You see sort of a big jump there, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those costs are, are going all the way up. Like they sort of look like in the budget. Next year, future years, we won't see that. We hope to get to sort of a level place where you can really compare apples with apples, you know, one year to the next. Okay, professional development, we've got in at 40,000. This COVID thing is going to hit professional development hard everywhere. We tried to keep this in for fire. You know, they have certifications and certain things they have to do. So we don't want to starve their budget too much of that. And then kind of various miscellaneous charges. This is the fire department's contribution to our lobbyists that help us find grant money. They have turned out to be very effective. As you guys know, they've pulled in a lot of money for us. We pay for them. It's about $100,000 a year roughly. We pay for that over several different funds. Our fire department contributes 15,000 to that. Okay. Okay, so last page here on fire. I've got a little bit of money in for technology. That was in supplies previously. We've got some in for, you know, other operating expense. And then we get into some insurance, you know, they carry part of our property and casualty insurance. And then this is the bad debts number that you're seeing right here. I hope that it isn't quite this high. It was in 2019. We had kind of a rough year. I think we're, you know, more or less on budget so far in 2020. But this number is hard to forecast and it's going to depend on a number of things, you know, partly the economy and how things are doing. Partly just, you know, what Gary sees in terms of his, his transports. If somebody is really destitute and they don't have insurance, it's just, it's difficult to collect from them, right? So altogether, this fund is, is expected to spend about $4.2 million at the end of the year. And then so when we make our transfer from the general fund, we will essentially set our total revenue at our total expenses. So there will be a zero fund balance. We don't carry a balance in this fund. We carry in the general fund instead. Okay, any questions about fire? Everybody good?
Steve, how much does this change if we don't pass the Gallagher or the state doesn't pass the Gallagher? Ballot question.
So that's a good question. What we've done here, we know that our revenue numbers from taxes are going to change because we're getting assessments in right now and stuff. We have forecasted this budget to basically not degalagherize. So we've kind of taken a conservative approach and said that, yeah, our revenue may slip down a little bit. It doesn't really hurt us as much as you would think. We're going to get hurt if we do not degalagherize by about $125,000 between the general fund and this fund is the answer. But this budget takes into consideration not degalagherizing, which means we would conceivably lose a little bit revenue. So we're on the conservative side when we're trying to budget here.
And if I remember correctly, the, the overall cut to our fire district was, would be if we don't degalagherize 130,000. Is that correct?
That's about right. Between 120 and 130.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Then Paula.
Yeah, just a quick question, Steve, and you and I be the right guy to ask, but with overtime in 2020 and 2021, the page previous, is that being optimistic in view of the Grizzly Creek fire and everything else that we're doing? Red Canyon fire?
Yeah, you know, Gary and I talked about that and I, I think we're both comfortable with that as a forecast. Who knows what's going to happen next year? You know, hopefully we'll be kind of through, you know, the bigger fire events that we've had this year. Next year will be its own event as far as fire goes. So we didn't find that there was really any specific reason to make a big change to that number. So hopefully we'll come in and about that. Yeah, the other thing I would say about that is if we do exceed that number, there's a very good chance that we'll get some help from that in, you know, grants and other relief funding that would offset some of that. So that's how I kind of got comfortable with that number.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Rick. Paula, go ahead.
Steve, did we, did you account? So we did the ambulance fees less that 250,000 and then we also have it as bad debt later, or is that something else?
Yeah, those, yeah, those are unfortunately different things. This net, wherever that was. I'm sorry. Anyway, this bad debt right here is money that we've billed to people and that we're just never going to collect because they didn't pay the bill and they didn't have insurance.
For ambulance services.
Correct, exactly. So and the number that we saw above, that was $800,000 and netted to $500,000. That difference is because insurance companies and FICA, Medicare, Medicaid, or Medicare, Medicaid don't always pay 100 cents on the dollar with what we bill. So there will be discounts or adjustments there. So those are investments and these are just kind of non-payments.
So we'd see as much as between the two of them, $500,000 lost in our ambulance service?
Possible. It's possible. That's a big problem. I mean, it's something that we've wrestled with for, you know, the whole time that I've been here. And it's just, it's a difficult one. It's just, it's a difficult one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would just to follow up on that, Paula, like I know this is really one of the things that Gary struggles with, but they, you know, they have to provide service.
Absolutely.
To save lives.
I just thought it was a double negative. I didn't realize it was actually five hundred thousand.
I wish, I wish it was a double negative. It's not really very different from other communities that I've seen. I mean, it's just, it's a really tough one. And it's partly just kind of the makeup of the people that get transported. You know, a lot of those people just don't have a lot of funds.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, anything else fire-wise or? Should we go to equipment? Okay, so this is fire equipment replacement. We moved this down from three point five mils to two point five mils. And recognized a little bit of additional revenue in operating for the fire department instead of equipment replacement. So that's why you're seeing these numbers go down a little bit. And again, we're assuming, you know, that we do not degalgorize. If we do degalgorize, this number will go up a little bit. It's not going to make a huge difference, but it would go up some, probably in the area of about eighty thousand dollars or so. Impact fees. We get paid for, so those contribute a little bit to our bottom line. If anybody wants a lot of detail about how those impact fees come together, we're probably going to need to plug Gary into the conversation because he lives in that world every day and I don't. Okay, kind of moving down to expenditures. So Gary has got a hundred thousand dollars in here for station improvements. Don't know exactly what all those things are going to be, but we're kind of estimating that the four mile station and the downtown station will take about half of that together. And then the West Glenwood Station will take the other fifty thousand. The big change in the West Glenwood Station is that we really need to deal with our HVAC system out there. If we were going to move out of that building next year or something, we probably wouldn't worry about it, but it looks like we're going to be there at least for the next two, three, four years or beyond. So we really do need to address that and take care of those guys because that's not working well for them out there. These two things are structural firefighting gear. I heard when I talked to Gary earlier today, they've put in for a grant. I talked to him a couple of weeks ago and he said, you know, we're eighty percent of the way through that grant. Hopefully we'll get that and it'll offset the cost of this hundred and eighty thousand dollars. He told me today that he was even more optimistic. He had gotten kind of a soft yes for that. So I will maybe make a change if we know for sure that we're going to get that and I'll put that hundred and eighty thousand dollars in as a revenue in this fund. But that would be something that falls in kind of material change category. So if, if that happens, I will make sure to bring that back to you and point out that we made that change, but that change, if, if it happens, will be to the better by about a hundred and eighty thousand.
Steve, I think they were awarded it.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, I, I, when I talked to him, he, he was somewhat stopping short of saying a hundred percent guaranteed, so I guess I should stop short of that, but I think that's right. And so maybe we should just go ahead and on that, unless you hear differently, I'm going to add that grant in which will offset some of this. Is that good with everyone? Okay, because Deborah, I think you're right. I mean, I think they're, they're pretty much there.
I read the, I mean, they're, they're awarding it. I mean, I think we could still mess something up with paperwork and not get it, but I don't think we're intending to mess anything up.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully not.
Rick, you had a question?
Yeah, just real quick. The one point one two two eight in the twenty twenty budget for capital outweigh, that was sort of earmarked. And so is that money still around since we didn't spend it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, this number came about almost entirely last year from the purchase of, you know, the West Glenwood Fire Station that we were kind of contemplating at the time. It turns out we didn't do that. So, you know, when you look down through our cash balances, you can see that, you know, the money just kind of flows through and hits our reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
We'll continue to save money until we're ready to pull the trigger.
All right. So kind of just kind of rounding out the, the fund balance here, you'll see this in A and I too, but let me just explain real quickly what you guys are looking at here. This number ties back to the audit that we finished in twenty eighteen, so this is an actual number. We thought then in twenty nineteen that we would spend about fifty-one thousand, add about fifty-one thousand dollars to this budget. It turns out we're going to add a lot more to this fund balance because we didn't buy a fire station, right? So we thought our fund balance was going to be a million bucks and in reality, it's going to be almost two million bucks, although we don't own a fire station. So then we bring those numbers down here. We forecast what we think is going to happen this year. The original forecast at forty-two eight, again, you know, we, our plans changed a little bit, fire station wise. So most of this, the revenue that we get will stay in this fund. Gary's not really planning to spend a whole lot of revenue out, out of this fund. So this fund balance is going to increase some. Okay, so this beginning balance is where we started at, at two thousand and twenty. That's an estimate, but, you know, hopefully should be roughly correct. This five hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars is what we think we're going to add to it in twenty twenty-one. So we get an ending balance of three point three million dollars down here. So that's where our ending balance of our fire and equipment replacement trust is supposed to be. Just noticing that my little underline here should really be under the five hundred and fifty-nine instead of the three point two. All these numbers from all kinds of different places, so you see different fonts sometimes and stuff, whatever. So I'll probably make that change.
And Steve, do we have any, when we were looking at another fire station, do we have a preliminary estimate on what that cost was?
When we were kind of in talks with the West Glenwood Fire Station?
Yeah.
They were asking nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think, and we had offered in the, I think we offered them nine twenty-five.
Property.
The property, yeah. Yeah, just the property, then we would have had to build a building on top of it.
All right, any, anything else, Steve?
Not for me.
All right, any question, any further questions or anything that anybody has any issues with on fire U S and fire equipment replacement? Okay, moving on. We're going to be in, again, the A and I discussions.
All right, this is the fun stuff that we get to and you guys will have another bite at this apple. We'll, we're going to bring the A and I fund back in our next meeting when we talk about general funded capital projects. But since it's kind of a complicated fund, I wanted to give you guys and everybody a chance to sort of understand what we've put in here as things that we know are priorities for you guys that you can consider in this budget. So we can kind of run through this and then, you know, Jonathan will probably ask for the head nod that we've talked about today at the next meeting when we get there. Okay, so sales tax wise. That's going to be a difficult number to forecast for next year for obvious reasons. We're going to stick with our ten percent reduction and I, I mean, I still feel pretty good about that number. We are going to get some help from what they call SUTS, right? It's a sales and use tax system. That's the state system that got put together that allows us to collect taxes from online remote sellers that don't have a presence here. Previously, we haven't been able to do that, but we do have a little bit of teeth now. We can have them not actually get a license in Glenwood Springs, but everything they ship into Glenwood Springs, they'll have to pay tax on directly to the state and then it gets distributed to the appropriate municipality from there. So that makes it way easier for them to do that. It's going to take some time, you know, to get that all set and to get everybody because it's really brand new, but that will help our sales tax revenue. It'll give us a better tax base of online remote sales that we haven't gotten quite enough of in the past. So that's not really in here. I mean, I did, I didn't really factor that in because I just don't know how much it's going to be in the next year. I do think it's going to be significant, you know, two, three years down the road and then forever because we'll be pulling those taxes in. It's going to take us a little while to get started. And then we're estimating about two hundred thousand dollars in use tax that comes to us from a couple of different channels, but altogether we're at about four point eight million. Which, I mean, I think we can live with. It's not great when you compare it to last year's five point three five million. But what are you going to do? Okay. So kind of moving along audit revenue, that's money that, you know, our auditors pick up for us when somebody files a tax return. And, you know, we go back and our auditors say, it wasn't quite right. Yo, it's a little bit more money. So when that happens, we spread that out across funds and that's our forecast for, for this year's twenty thousand dollars. So these are grants and it gets a little bit complicated here and I always kind of struggle with the best way to show this to you guys. But I think this will make sense. So this is the big build grant that we got, right, from the federal government that Deborah and her team went out and got. That will get spent as South Midland gets built, right? So we're putting this in as a revenue so that you guys can see the full expenditure of what we think we're going to write checks for, for South Midland next year. So the net spend on South Midland will be, you know, this revenue minus the actual expenditure that we've got, right? So this won't be quite enough to cover all of it, but it's a pretty good number. I mean, it was pretty good to get that grant. Okay, on these two, it's very, very similar, but technically there may be a little bit of a difference because here, this is the underpass that we were talking about or includes the underpass that we were talking about and some other stuff. It may be the same with Lova as well. We may not actually be the agency that collects the money. So it may never actually hit our books as revenue. We may just participate, right, as somebody that is writing a check out of our organization and into, you know, the agency that actually handles that money. If that happens, then what I would do is take this income number off because it never really hit our books. And then I would take the expenditure, I would take that amount of the expenditure off as well. So net-net, and I feel pretty good about all these numbers, but just be aware that, you know, as we build this stuff, if we build this stuff then, you know, there may be that little technical change there in, in revenue. So it's sort of when you look at this and you think, yeah, we got eight point seven six three million dollars in, in grants, that's a great number. But it's, you know, offset by spending that we're doing a little bit further down in the budget. And then this cares reimbursement, that hundred thousand dollars is assuming that we submit to DOLA for reimbursement for the fab grants that we gave out in G four, right? This fund was responsible for a hundred thousand dollars that if we get that money back, we'll put it back into A and I. Okay, little bit of interest. That's pretty much it. So including grants and everything, we're expecting about thirteen point seven million dollars in, in incoming revenue for, for this fund. Okay, and so every year we transfer some money out of A and I. You guys have seen all of these, I think, in the past. I don't think that these are materially different. The community center has come down a little bit and when I got here was like a million and five. Brian and his team have done a phenomenal job, just kind of cleaning things up over there, making things more efficient over there. If you go to the community center a lot, you'll see that. Probably won't see it right now, but it, it's, it's a well-run, clean community center that I think is functioning pretty well and Brian has really cut five hundred thousand dollars out of the operating cost, so. Way to go, Brian. Yeah, transfer, this is affordable housing. We transferred in the general fund and it funds our employee housing program for, you know, some of the lower paid employees in the organization. And then this is the hundred thousand dollars from special events that gets transferred. So there's one point four two million dollars kind of going out. Last year was one point five four, but really pretty similar to what you guys have seen in the past. Okay. Moving down here, this is sustainable strategies. That's our, our lobbying firm. A and I fund kicks in twenty-two thousand five hundred bucks. That's their share of it. This is what we think we're going to give out in fab grants next year. Last year was a better number. It was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, about a hundred and sixty thousand because we decreased our revenue forecast by ten percent. Okay, this one is good news and bad news, I guess. This is the TIF. So every time we earn revenue in any of our sales tax eligible funds, we have, we have to pay a little bit of that revenue into the DDA. So the DDA, we get all of it up to a certain level. After that level, we split it with the DDA. Well, if we're going to get up to that level, but we're forecasting a pretty significant, you know, ten percent decrease, that'll come down quite a bit. So from our forecast last year to this year, that's why you see this number coming down. So it's good news in that we don't have to spend this money out of A and I. It's kind of bad news because it never gets received or spent out of the DDA. Because it just never gets generated in the first place. Okay, then economic incentive rebates, that's money that we split over again, various funds when somebody does something that fits into our economic incentive program. Forecasting twenty-seven thousand dollars on that this year. And then here's what we sort of give away, right? We, we contribute money to some of our partners that, that we care about. Lova gets twenty-five thousand dollars from us each year. Historical museum gets sixty thousand dollars from us and we left the Rudy Aquatics in. Interfund cost of service, I think we've talked about, that's two percent more than it was last year. Okay, and so moving down, these are the big things. These are the projects that, that we're expecting to put some money and time into. So starting up here, five hundred thousand dollars, that's what we think is going to be our contribution to an overpass or underpass. There's going to be money that comes from lots of different places. It's probably a ten million dollar project. Our contribution will be five hundred thousand dollars in that one. Assuming that happens. South Midland reconstruction, you saw that we're getting about six million in grant revenue. We think roughly we're going to spend about nine point nine million. That one is really an estimate. It's hard to know exactly because we haven't taken it out to bid yet. We think that we're going to do that this fall. We should be able to break ground and make a lot of progress in twenty twenty-one. I think the project is scheduled to finish up in twenty twenty-two, I believe. So we tried to build in just a little bit of description or explanation on those numbers. Then South Bridge, this is another one. It shows that we're spending two point three million dollars. In reality, we've got that grant that we talked about earlier, offsetting that. Really, we're spending twenty percent. Net impact to our budget is twenty percent of this, two point three million dollars.
Steve, Rick had his hand up.
Okay.
Back to the Rudy thing for a minute. We're budgeting twelve-five. Have we paid our twenty twenty bill yet?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't remember seeing it this year.
Okay.
I, I can confirm that for you, Rick, but I don't think we've paid it yet.
Okay, okay, well, I'll follow up with you.
Smarter than me, she's new, so there's your answer.
You know, just I'll leave it to a guy like me to talk about a twelve thousand dollar expenditure in the midst of, you know, three million here, nine million there. But I want to go back to South Bridge for just a minute. So that's the request for twenty twenty-one. Correct, and then we talked about putting money aside to do this. So what is, you know, so what's our total firepower when it comes to South Bridge right now?
Yeah, so what you're saying is exactly right. We're going to spend two, we expect to spend two point three million this year. We expect to be reimbursed eighty percent of that and then you'll see what we've set aside for that when we get down to our reserves. But basically, a year ago, you guys asked us to set a couple of reserves aside, one for Sixth Street and one for South, South Bridge. The South Bridge was twenty-five thousand dollars or, sorry, the South Bridge one was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, you'll see that there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars kind of earmarked for South Bridge. That answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. So this one, acquisitions and improvement fund contingency, we do the same thing in capital projects. You know, we're spending a lot of money here and there are going to be some things that don't go exactly the way that we think they're going to go and they generate some change orders. And the people in our organization like Terry and Brian that really have to manage those projects day to day need a little bit of room to handle some of those change orders that aren't huge things, but they come up here and there. So we need to give them a little bit of room in the budget to handle that. And, you know, we're spending fourteen point four million dollars. I'd love to see this, this contingency be higher than that, but I think we do need to get in. You know, we expect that some of those projects are going to slip over a little bit. We could put this number and allocate it across all of our budgets. Problem though with that is that, you know, this is a public document and, you know, once you have a public document that says this is the budget that we've got for a project, we're probably going to spend up to that. So we're trying to kind of thread the needle between, you know, keeping our expected and announced expenditure down a little bit to what we really think it's going to be and still give, you know, staff a little bit of room to maneuver when to what we really think it's going to be and still give, you know, staff a little bit of room to maneuver when something comes up that's unexpected. Okay, and then this last one is Lova. Lova Trail, this is the one that I was talking about a little bit earlier. You know, our contribution, the total cost of the project is one point two million dollars. We get about a million dollars, a million fifty thousand of that or so, you know, from other partners are reimbursed to us. So our net to the city is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from that project. Okay, and again, if it turns out that somebody else is the custodian of that money, we'll take it out of our budget as a revenue. And you'll just see this hundred and sixty thousand dollar number and you won't see any revenue. Okay, but the net to the budget will be the same. Okay. So moving along, this fifty thousand dollars was just in a different line item last year. But every year we throw fifty thousand dollars into our trail system, river cleanup, that kind of stuff. That number, I think, has not changed in the last, at least since I have been here. So we've got that in. This is our bond, right? We're going to be stuck paying about two million dollars a year for, you know, a few more years. It was a twenty-year bond and we're entering the third year of it. So twenty, you know, count with two million dollars a year coming out of our ANI fund for a while. Okay, and then here's just sort of where the rubber meets the road, I think, in ANI. And this is kind of the money page. Same format that we saw when we went through FIRE. We start here at this fourteen point three million. That ties back to our audit that is official and completed at the end of two thousand and eighteen. We thought we were going to spend about two million bucks or sorry, we thought we were going to increase the fund by about two million dollars. Turns out, we're going to increase by about two point nine million dollars. And it's just because we didn't get quite as far along in some things and carried them over, you know, to into this budget. So it's not really that it's unexpected and it doesn't really change the outcome of it, but we do start a million dollars higher. Okay, so twenty-twenty, fund balance. We originally thought we'd start at about sixteen-three, actually started at seventeen-two. We thought we were going to go five point six million into it. We only went four point one million into it for exactly the same reason. So we end up a little bit better there, right? So our original forecast from last year was ten point six million. Now we know more about how twenty-twenty is unfolding. So we're thinking more like thirteen million. So that number carries down to here. This year, we're going to spend four point eight million dollars into that, which is if you go down here to total net revenue, that's the thirteen point seven million that we talked about. And total expenditures are eighteen point five million that we've talked about. So that's how you get to this four point eight million dollar number. And thank you, Charlie, for pointing out to me that that was a little bit hard to understand without this little table in there. Okay, so having said all of that, the ending balance in your ANI fund, at the end of twenty-twenty-one, we're expecting to be about eight point three million dollars. From that eight point three million dollars, there are some things that we have to set aside. The first one being about two million dollars for our bond reserve. The bank, when we closed on this, required us to have at least one year worth of payments in a separate fund that we've agreed not to touch. It's very common. One year is pretty typical, but we can't really spend that money. We've allocated that in a different place. It'll ultimately end up making the last year's bond payment. But until then, we've got to carry on our books. This is seven hundred and fifty thousand, the South Bridge Reserve that Rick had talked about a little while ago, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And until we hear differently, we will continue to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that reserve each year, you know, budget dollars being available, you know. I guess it's contingent on that. This is our Sixth Street Reserve. I didn't know honestly if we were going to be able to get this whole thing in. I think we can. This one point seven five million dollars is what we talked about last year. Set aside for Sixth Street. We don't expect to spend it necessarily, but Sixth Street is important. And I think at some point, we're going to get to it. So we're trying to save up a little bit of money, so we're ready for it. Theater Reserve, that just kind of gets carried every year. Our fab grants, this assumes that we spend all of our fab grant money in twenty-twenty, right? We've got, I mean, I forget how much we've got left, but around seventy-five thousand dollars left. So this assumes that we go ahead and spend that. We have a revenue that's kind of coming back into the ANI fund in general. But this ten thousand three hundred and seven dollars was the fund balance that we ended up with at the end of twenty nineteen that we carried over to twenty-twenty. Okay, so if we end up not spending all of our fab grant money, that would add to this reserve. Okay, this three million, the last number in red that you see down there, that is the contingency that's really unallocated. I mean, it's money that, you know, if things really go bad, if we really miss our revenue numbers, if we have, you know, rockfalls and canyons that, you know, create other problems for us, you know, we carry three million dollars in this fund. There's about two million dollars in the capital projects fund. And there will be something like, you know, four or five million-ish in the general fund that we talk about next week. So we try to carry about ten million dollars there for things that come up and become problems. You know, if it happens in our water or electric or landfill or something, we may be able to leverage those funds a little bit. We can't really borrow money in ANI without, you know, either going out to the voters or going through a long process of underwriting and stuff. It's not just something that we could snap our fingers and do. So if you guys are willing to leave this three million dollars in the budget, you know, I think Deborah and Yvette and I feel pretty comfortable that we can get through twenty-twenty-one. And if things really, really go badly and, you know, COVID just continues to kick our butt and we have more fires and whatever, we may have to limp through a little bit. We may have to make some changes, but I think we can make it through because you guys have been willing to leave, you know, responsible reserves in your funds. And so when you hear people saying that you're irresponsible and you're overspending your money or you're spending down your reserves or something, I would probably take issue with that. I think this three million dollars is a responsible, reasonable number. And I guess I should say thank you guys for being willing to hang on to this instead of, you know, spending it down. All the things we want to do, it'd be easy to say, well, let's just carry two million because we don't think we're going to spend it. But that three million, the extra million dollars helps us sleep a little bit better at night. So available reserves, after all of that is said, that's basically either spending or allocating, you know, all of our ANI fund, there's, you know, ninety-four thousand dollars left. And then we put the cash balance in as of the end of twenty nineteen. And that was fifteen point nine million dollars just in cash sitting in the bank. So I'm sorry to run through that so quickly. It's four twenty-eight and I know that we've got something else coming up. I'll take whatever questions anybody wants or has time for. If anything was a little bit unclear, please call me or Yvette, we'll talk about it. It's important to us that you guys have a good understanding what this fund is. And then next time when we talk about general fund and capital projects fund, we'll bring this one up as well. And we can talk about it in a little bit more depth and see if there's anything in here that anybody feels like is a showstopper.
We have some questions, Steve, and we also have the Housing Commission. But I think if we can answer some questions, take five minutes, if they're real, sit tight on the Housing Commission with us. I had a quick question, Steve. I believe our conversation about a year and a half ago was restricting. You know, we kind of divvied out the ANI, you know, here's forty million, here's what the bond said. Here's what we're putting aside. And I remember saying, we're putting aside twenty million for South Bridge, the possibility of a South Bridge. And in addition, we're putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year out of the revenue, the ANI revenue. So I get the seven fifty. Where is, I understand, we can't necessarily show the twenty million dollars that we've, you know, set aside for South Bridge. But in that same conversation, we were talking about the Sixth Street and setting aside one point seven five. So how come Sixth Street Reserve is demonstrated, but South Bridge isn't? And I guess I would say, you know, can we show both or show neither? Because they were all in that same conversation about what we do with the balance of ANI.
Right, and you're right, they were all in the same conversation. There is a difference, though. The twenty million dollars of capacity that you're referring to is bonding capacity. When we went out to vote a few years ago, the public authorized the city to issue up to fifty-four million dollars in bond financing. So far, we've issued twenty-two point two million dollars in bond financing. So that difference is still available to us. We'll need to have a little more revenue in ANI to be able to service that debt. Or, you know, we can make some changes to the existing debt or structure something around it. But the twenty million that you're referring to is, you know, money that is available to us if we choose to go out and bond for it. Does that make sense?
Gotcha, and I just thought Sixth Street was in that same boat, in that same conversation. So why is Sixth Street?
It was, yeah, it was in the same conversation. It's just a little bit different in that we already have that money. I mean, we don't need to go out and bond for that or anything. It's in our, in our budget, so we're just setting that aside, but it's real money.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Rick, Paula and Shelley.
Yeah, I just say that was my memory too, with South Bridge. And if we could bring partners to the table, then we would go out and consider bonding to keep them at the table and to move the project forward. So I understand why that doesn't appear here. Just wanted to say that I think this fund has been really responsive to the ballot issue that Steve's talked about and Jonathan has referred to, too. And so that it would be nice if we had a big sack of money somewhere. But when the voters told us that South Bridge was a priority, when they told us the Confluence was a priority, when they told us Sixth Street was a priority, that's where we went with the decisions we made. And I still hear from time to time, people say, well, you know, you're spending all this money, but you're not spending anything on the streets. And we had the street tax discussion a couple of weeks ago. And the reason for that was that when that vote was taken, there was a definite ranking of things that the public wanted to have done, streets not being among them. And so when people say, well, why can't you just use maybe the three million dollar reserves that you have put aside here in AMI to fix the streets? And, you know, that's not really an apples-to-apples sort of comparison. And I still think that we have our work cut out in front of us to accurately tell the public where some of these budget numbers are. And I'm not trying to grandstand here, I'm just trying to, you know, look down the road. Because when we looked at the street tax and the revenue that that's generating, it's just insufficient for a town with as many magnitudes or order of magnitude for public infrastructure. So I just wanted to set ANI here and everything else that we're doing on another page. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. We have, I said we'd take five minutes and delay the next group. So Paula, you have the last word. And this is not the final conversation on this. We'll definitely come back and talk about it and get some questions answered. So go ahead, Paul.
Okay, just real quickly to Rick's just recent statement is, you know, we do have some flexibility in ANI. You can see that in the transfer to other funds, including the community center and parks maintenance and stuff, higher up, the employee housing. So I hate to completely tie our hands because we, as a council, I feel, have some flexibility. But on that note, I, you know, I do think that we need to get some of these projects that the voters voted for. My question is on, and maybe it's more towards council, is we really need to address the airport question before we move forward on how we're spending South Bridge in the next year. So I'd like to, for us as a council, to kind of put that forward and go, let's get those discussions going and community meetings. So we're deciding whether or not to spend six million dollars on an underpass over there for South Bridge. I just feel like I don't want to move in one direction and then have it all reverse on us. So something to consider in a future meeting and really kind of look at new income along the lines of an attractions tax that we've talked about. We've talked about it for a year. Maybe we can direct staff to start really putting some stuff together to start looking at that happening. So those are my comments to this. And thank you very much, Steve. It's great.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. We'll have more on that. We're running five minutes late for our next agenda item. We have our Housing Commission has been patiently waiting. So we will now move over to the next item in our agenda. This is our Joint Housing Commission. I apologize to Shelley and Tony who had questions, but we just, we can't keep our folks waiting. Looks like we have Christian, Aaron, Matt. Can we promote everybody on the Housing Commission to participants, panelists? Oh, it looks like that just happened. Wow, that's amazing. All right. Who is taking the lead on this?
I think that would be me, Mayor.
Hi, Hannah.
Hi. Good evening, Council. Thank you, Hannah Klausman, tonight with Community Development, also staff liaison to the Housing Commission. So glad that we could get this on the books and see that Housing Commission is here to discuss this with you. I'm going to keep my section very brief so you guys can get to that discussion point. The staff report indicated that this is a continuation of the discussion you guys had in March where Matt Langhorst presented the hundred and nineteen city-owned properties. And then we looked further at what possible development potential could be. So community development staff picked that up and focused on nine properties. And we went over those nine properties with Housing Commission in depth. And I can bring up all of those attachments on a shared screen. And Housing Commission came to a recommendation of two properties out of the nine, but also still wanted to make very clear that they want the full nine to be in consideration for this discussion. So I am going to share my screen and pull up those nine properties really quickly, hopefully. So here are the nine properties that I'm talking about. And we've put the two that are being recommended for top priority from the Housing Commission there at the top, which is the Eighth and Midland property. It's a small section over here close to City Hall as well as what is known as the Ittings property, which is over off of Airport Road, but not the airport property itself. Wanted to make that very clear. So this is just, this is in your, in your staff report packet, a breakdown of the properties with what community development came up with a possible number of units for the property and zoning. And we can go into more depth with this. I saw that Trent is also on the panel tonight. So he had the Ittings property and I reviewed Eighth and Midland. So I think what I'd like to do is maybe open it up for questions or areas that council is wanting more detail on and then getting Housing Commission and you discussing on where we landed here. Have you guys had a chance to look at these spreadsheets? I know there's a lot of information.
Question from Council, excuse me, questions from Council? Go ahead, Cheryl.
You just, the proposal is to put these properties there and I apologize if I don't remember, but where are we, where are we looking? This gives us a start toward trying to obtain funding to actually build the units. I apologize for not recalling that.
No, that's okay, that's a great question as far as where we're at right now. And this was really drilling down so that we could present to council and Housing Commission properties that had a potential and then see where council wants to go from there. So staff is seeking direction. Questions that were included in the staff report about funding sources and also who would be involved in this type of project? We're calling pilot or model project that the city might be involved in by just with the land or further. Those are questions for discussion tonight on how we'd like, how you would like to move forward, excuse me.
Rick.
Yeah, and just really quick, Hannah, can you maybe talk about the criteria? How the Ittings and Eighth and Midland kind of burble to the top of the list? You know, when you look at the other properties, the other seven?
Sure, so, and some of those are included in this brief. I think that number one we have on the right-hand side is whether the property requires a public vote for the city to use it in this manner. So we had a few that have, are designated there as yes, they would require a public vote. So obviously that put it on a more complicated path for that particular property. Eighth and Midland and Ittings property came to the top just because of all of these things, number of units, as well as being probably the least complicated of the list. That's not saying they don't have their own complications that we've included. But as you see in your packet, Eighth and Midland has been considered for this in the past and has a Eighth and Midland has been considered for this in the past and has a preliminary site plan. That's only for just visual aid. It's not something that we've pulled the trigger on. I want to be clear about that. And Ittings property as well, not some of the, we looked at the geo hazards. Also, if, if it was going to require the property to be subdivided or a rezoning, things of that nature that community development looked at and that we relayed to the Housing Commission. So these two came to the top of the non-complicated, possibly, we'll call it lowest hanging fruit. Still kind of high, but lowest hanging fruit to get going on more than these other. And, and Jen is also on here and she can chime in if I've missed anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Yeah, sorry. I follow a question, my other question, Hannah. I went back and looked at the staff report. I forgot. I read it two days ago. I can't remember no funding. Could, is it a possibility if we're looking at moving forward that we could, that as a city could contribute to housing by contributing the land and getting a developer to, to build the property? Is that an option? Or what are the various options that may be available? You said that haven't been identified, but that's one thing I can think of is we would give the land and the developer do it. It'd be great if we could build 21 units.
Yes. And the funding question is obviously big. All of these properties, you know, if we move forward with developing a site plan to try and attract a developer, that's money as well. But really, at the very base, what you just mentioned is the city owns this land and has the opportunity to put it towards a project, which as you probably know, that's, that's a large cost of, of getting some of these development projects going. That's, that's where we've stopped. I don't know if, if Jen or Deborah have additional comments on, on possible funding avenues or how, how we're approaching that.
Shelley.
I just wanted to chime in a little bit on the question on how the properties were picked. We did have some discussion on Housing Commission about, you know, they, their desire would be to get a project going relatively soon, you know, in the next year or two. So all of the other properties, the other ones that were not, that did not raise to the top, they all have some either other purpose that may be in mind or other kind of restriction or weight on them, or even political things that might kind of tie them up more, you know, like Bogalar is still in the 6F, working through that. North Landing certainly has a lot of interest politically in that. So they, they kind of decided to steer away from properties that might be tied up in other concerns that would really could put a project off for, you know, five, six years. And then as far as Charlie's question, I, I guess I'll just chime in on that quickly too, that I think that's kind of what the commission is after here tonight. We have some people on the commission that have good experience in housing project development and understanding. Again, it's one of those commissions where we have some expertise that are, are much smarter than me, I will say. And I guess they're looking for some direction from council and how much can they be empowered to pursue some ideas and concepts on how to get this done? And then bring that back at a later date, you know, how can they, can they get creative with this and look for partners? And how do they want to go? So that's part of the idea here tonight, Charlie.
Tony.
Hi, I wanted to follow up on what Shelley's saying. If, if they would like some direction, I want to really thank Hannah and her comments in the paper too, that this is completely informational. But I will tell you that there is a lot of pushback on this. And frankly, with what's going on, just in a general sense, Glenwood Springs cannot house the valley workforce. So someone driving from Rifle to Aspen can move to Glenwood and drive there. I don't think it's fair until this community can address its infrastructure. People move to Glenwood Springs because it's a beautiful place and it's a great place to live. That's why I think everyone here lives here. If we're going to change it and move thousands of more people into it, it won't be the same. You, we've seen what's happened with this fire and water supply and stuff. I am very concerned, you know, I see little housing projects as one thing. When I hear about projects with 450 people, that is not doable. It's not doable in West Glenwood. And hopefully there's going to be some change there in leadership, but it's not doable in that area because the infrastructure can't support it, those roundabouts, the highway, et cetera, the schools, or not have another supermarket. And I've said this before, but for now, I think we can look at projects. I have no problem with that. But what I get concerned, Mr. Mayor, is when we start saying, we're going to build a big housing project over here and everyone gets all upset. And I, I don't know sometimes why we're in the business of upsetting our residents. Thank you.
Thanks for those questions, Tony. Let's hear from our Housing Commission. Really, I just want to thank you guys. This is a new commission. I think it was developed about a year and a half ago, maybe a year ago. We had one P and Z, joint P and Z City Council Housing Commission that I attended. And I think we had another one that I was not able to attend, but I thought that was just, it's fantastic. We had some great momentum. We were talking about a lot of ideas. I think Clark Anderson facilitated one. And then COVID. So I think this is an attempt to probably restart those conversations, you know, and maybe have a couple of these things as, as starting points. Sumner, go for it, brother.
Sumner, bottom left.
He's muted. Yep.
Sorry about that. Now I should unmute it. You got me now? All right. I'm not gonna, I'll speak from my perspective of the commission and, and confirm what Shelley said and not disagree necessarily with Tony. We're not trying to house the valley's workforce. I think what we're looking to do, consistent with the comp plan and with the city's strategic vision, is to come up with a small pilot project that creates some form, yet to be determined with your guidance and our work, of affordable housing. And one of the reasons is it's been a goal of the city. And a lot of us attended a workshop several years ago that reinforced that goal. We, but we have, we're one of the only communities I know of anywhere around that has no partnership housing with, whether it be Habitat or others, we just haven't been able to do it for a variety of reasons. So we're looking for guidance on a pilot with the city with skin in the game, which would be the land at least, maybe tap fees, we don't know. And kind of the answer to Charlie is we don't know whether it be developer options, whether it be employee or housing partnerships, like something like Steve Beckley did, whether it be the city or Habitat, or whether it be owner rent, what the AMI limits would be. We want to go forward with something. We want the city to commit at least to land commitment and then some direction to come back with a proposal. And infrastructure is important. We pick sites where infrastructure isn't a huge issue, particularly the Eighth and Midland one. So we're eager to get something done and shovel ready as fast as possible with the guidance from council. You give us a little guidance, we'll come back with a lot more. Thank you.
Thanks, Summer. Can we hear from any other folks on the Housing Commission? Ellen Dole, you are, got on Meet Yourself, bottom left-hand corner. There you go.
I see it. Thank you. Thanks for an opportunity to talk with you today. I think that we were talking as a group about having as our goal, and we had some sub-goals, as a model project of seeing if we can develop an example of how an affordable housing project in Glenwood Springs could go forward. We were not looking for a large number of units, but something much smaller that would focus on identifying issues dealing with what level of AMI the council might want to work for, what population would be good to be assisted in the housing, some guidance on the maximum number of units you'd want on the site. Do you want it a very dense project or a less dense project? Also, are we thinking about ways of how we can maintain, excuse me, a long-term public benefit, either as rental housing or homeownership component? So those were some kinds of things that we had been thinking about as a group. Do we want to have a public entity involved with us, private entity, look to nonprofit partners? You know, what kinds of groups do we want to work with on being able to work with the staff who've been terrific to get their technical expertise at this level so that we could keep it in-house, not have to be expending, excuse me, a lot of financial assistance right now. We could look in-house at the technical staff, which has been great. And also, do we want to focus on something that employer assisted? Where we're going to be doing a project with an employer or something more general? So those were some of the things that we had been thinking about.
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else on Housing Commission?
Mr. Beckley. Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. So, so to, a little bit to Tony's question is, in, in my mind, the thing that's so important is more housing for, for our workers, our police force, our teachers, our fire department, people that work in our town. So, so the, the city councils, you know, come up with a great idea for rentals where we can, you know, de-restrict them to having to work in 81601. So I, I think there's some real possibilities of, I would really like to have a community where our people live in town and work in town. And so that's a real goal of mine is to try to find that kind of housing for, for people to live in town and, and do it with employers and do it with the people, you know, that care about having people in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Other folks. Charlie, go ahead.
So I appreciate the information and I, I want to applaud the Housing Commission for the work they've done so far. And I know, I think Shelley and Paula have been working with them as well. And I want to appreciate your time. And, and I agree with Tony, we're not here to provide housing press, but I think Steve Beckley's response to that is spot on. And if we could get people who are living and working here, I mean, we're talking about sometimes nurses and the hospital and all sorts of people like that that just can't afford to buy a house, but could maybe afford to get into some kind of a housing unit that we subsidize or we get subsidized through HUD or something like that. I don't know exactly what direction the Housing Commission needs, but I know I would support looking at one or both of these projects and how can we do it? And what would be the cost, the planning costs to do the site plan and to seek out those and come back to us with, here's, here's an idea of how you could do the one at Eighth and Midland. Here's an idea how you do the one at Ittings property. And these are the costs that might be associated with that. And do we have authority? And where are we going to get the money to even start up those, those costs? Because obviously we're going to have some limited resources over the next couple of years. But I, I, I don't think we stop. We can't stop planning for the future. We need to continue planning future. And I would certainly encourage the Housing Commission to move forward.
Thanks, Charlie. Paula.
Yeah, I'm following up with what Charlie's saying. I, I do think it's really important that we look at these opportunities for our local businesses and ourselves. You know, we provide our employees with the, the lower paid employees with the funding to help them with their rent. We know the cost to live here. And I feel like the conversations we've had with the Housing Commission and P and Z have kind of led us on this path this last year and a half since I've been on council. So what we're, Housing Commission is looking for is, you know, approval to explore this and see how we might be able to do something like this. And, and a small project will give us the base on what's the future for this. And so I feel that if we're looking at six units or 14 units and they find some opportunities for us that are outside the box on how we can make this happen, it's going to lead us down a path that we may be able to provide more housing for more small businesses in town or bigger businesses, whether it's the hospital or the school district, or like I said, our, you know, our city staff itself. So I think this is a good time to take the expertise that we see on our House, Housing Commission and ask them, please move forward, see what we could do with one of these two properties or both of them.
Thanks, Paula. I have a Sean Nesbit. I think, Sean, are you on the commission? You may did, maybe did not get promoted to a panelist, but I'm going to let you talk. I mean, click that allow to talk. So if you want to contribute to the conversation, now would be your time.
Thanks. I am on the commission. I'm the director of facilities for CMC and just kind of.
Sorry, Sean. I just promoted you to a panelist.
Thank you. I am on the, I am on the commission. Sorry for that. Got on a little late. I'm the director of facilities for CMC and only been in the valley three years, married to a teacher in the school district. So I see the, the issues on, in high turnover, both at CMC and the school district. I see the issue of people applying for jobs, being offered jobs and not being able to move here because of the, the cost of housing. Also seeing with the, the fire we have now, working at Central Services downtown, over 100 employees in that building. And quite a few of them can't get to the office today because they, they work or they live in Eagle or Gypson. And so they, they're pushed out. These are our employees, you know, in, in the valley. So, and we know, just in my time here, that a lot of these, these types of projects for them to go really need a strong partnership. And I know CMC is willing to be at the table in that on the, on the employer's side. And also we have some land opportunities that we've been, be willing to, to look at in the future. But we, we do understand that it, from developers to employers, to the, to local governments, it really is going to be a partnership to make these types of projects float. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. You know, and what I remember, at least what I remember saying anyway, at that joint P and Z Housing Commission meeting that we had, you know, it feels like forever ago, was that, you know, if, if housing is looking for direction, I, I would say, you know, I, I appreciate starting small with, with identifying a couple of properties that could be useful. But, you know, we just purchased that Ittings property. I think, I think we already have a couple hundred thousand dollars into that. So we've already started, if this is going to end up being in affordable housing, we, we already invested a hundred, several hundred thousand dollars in that property. I, I think, you know, since we don't have a lot of disposable money right now and not a lot of other folks do, it's, it's tough for me to get really excited about moving forward a conversation without significant partnership from Habitat for Humanity, an area employer, some, somebody else that could come in and say, okay, well, you have some land. You know, we're going to be asked, I'm sure, to waive impact fees. And those impact fees, just so we're clear, are things like water impact fees, which is, which is an issue right now. It's fire fees to our fire department. So there is a cost that we've already incurred. There will be additional cost. And I think we need to decide as a council in the community, how much we want to invest and, and we should budget for it. So if we as a council want to invest a half million dollars a year into this, I think we should account for that, budget for that and, and be systematic about it and measured. I think Housing Commission, I, I want you to go big. I mean, you are our Housing Commission. I want you to propose things to us that are wide-ranging and, and, you know, things that we should push back on probably. But I want to have that conversation. I want you to, you know, I, I look at other cities like Minneapolis and the entire state of Oregon. Oregon has outlawed single-family zoning in their state. Minneapolis does not have it in their city. Now, I'm not saying that if there's a vacant lot, I, I just saw there's a vacant lot on, I think on 12th Street because maybe a fire. I wouldn't want a high-rise to go in there in a single-family lot, but what's wrong with a duplex? Right now, we, we can't have duplexes in single-family areas. Right now, while we did tweak the ADU code to, to allow a little bit more square footage and percentage of four square feet, four floor space, we only allow one per lot. Why not two? And so I, I would like to see the Housing Commission come back and talk about things within our current community guidelines and standards of saying infill is important, density is important. So what are the things that are currently not addressed in our code? How do we incentivize somebody like myself? I have an ADU in my. I have an ADU in my basement, I have a large backyard, could I have an AD, a detached ADU in my backyard and have one under the roof and one in the backyard? I I think there's a lot of free market. Ideas that we can do to loosen restrictions that we've put on people throughout the years. And and a lot of these single-family zonings are just byproducts of redlining and and racial decisions that, you know. Maybe not here in Glenwood Springs, but in most of the country, that's where the single-family neighborhoods, you know, became sacrosanct. And so I I would really like to see the Housing Commission come back and say, what do we want to do holistically? What are some dramatic things that we could do as a community to increase capacity? To incentivize employers. You know, Mr. Beckley has done a great innovative creative partnership with CDOT. You know, the school district, I think they have like seventy units that they contributed to the affordable housing market here throughout the Valley. CMC is obviously coming to the table and saying, we want to do some things, you know, what about the hospital? What about the city for housing specifically city employees? Seventy percent of our workforce commutes into the city. So I I don't think that this is looking at housing Aspen employees. But even if it is, they're still Glenwood Springs residents. And if they're not Glenwood Springs residents, they're still Newcastle residents coming through on Grand Avenue, gridlocking our community. So even if they're commuting up Valley, I would rather have them in our community commuting up Valley and back to their home in Glenwood Springs than completely gridlocking South Canyon. I seventy and eighty-two. Those are my opinions, so I I guess I would like to throw back to the Housing Commission. Take a look at what other communities are doing and and throw back to us some potentially unpopular things that we can consider and and talk through. Shelley.
Great comments, Jonathan. I agree with a lot of what you're saying, and I'll just reiterate too, that housing is one of our main strategic goals. And so we should be investing in it, we should be figuring out a way to have a. A regular revenue stream that can go towards it. So I'd be interested in having that conversation. But I do think it would be great if this commission could be empowered to move forward on a project like this. And to be creative on the solutions, I'm I'm personally hoping we can come up with some type of. Community collaborative partnership with different groups. We've seen some models from down on the front range that have worked. So I would love to see that, I'm I'm tending towards wanting to see possibly for sale homes, homes like a townhome or some some kind of entry level. We've had a lot of rentals come online in the past couple of years, not necessarily real affordable rentals. And I think we have a lack of entry-level housing for our workers to be able to get into the real estate market. So I hate to shut that out. I don't know what the solution will be, but like I said, we we have some very dedicated and people with great expertise on our Housing Commission. And I'm hoping we can empower them to. See what they come up with. So thanks.
Deborah, jump in here, thanks, Shelley.
Yeah, and I know you guys aren't done discussing it yet, I just want to make be very sure that when you kind of give us where you want us to go, that it's clear. And, you know, like, if the Housing Commission is moving forward, like, what does that look right? Because the Housing Commission is an advisory board to you guys, I mean, they're full of great, smart, wonderful people, but they don't have any authority. So, you know, what does that look like, what is our role in that, what is their role? Just so we don't come back a month later and say, what do you really mean by that?
Thanks, Deborah, thanks for the clarifications and like four hands shot up as soon as you tried to refocus us, so. Rick, don't lose the momentum.
Well, yeah, but just real quick, you know, the advantage we do have is some small disconnected parcels. We really don't have, you know, the big spot, but the land is the advantage. And as I talk with Habitat folks, that is the leverage to make something happen. And, you know, I think it would be reasonable to say that any city effort would be restricted to people who are in fact employed in the city. But, you know, to the mayor's point, if they're not, you know, as long as they're not contributing to big traffic congestion. That's something that I think that we ought to keep our eye on, but, you know, I'd like to see some strategy, I'd like to see us identify some partners. I'd like to see us move forward and, you know, there's nothing wrong with having regional collaboration. I mean, we can't just say, well, you know, that's somebody else's problem. It's it affects all of us and Steve Beckley and his innovation and if he can't find the workers that he needs, he's sort of dead in the water. And we've got to honor that, we've got to honor the fact that not everybody's going to be able to afford a single-family house. And if they're irritated because the city is working on. Employee housing for the people that work here, then I think we need to have some other sort of dialogue. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick, Shelley, and then Charlie.
Real quick, I'll just chime in, I think Deborah brought it some really good points. And, you know, the Commission has great expertise, but there are also volunteers and they're put, they put in their time already. And a lot of them have jobs, so, yeah, we can't expect them to just take this on and run with it. There will certainly be staff time to go along with this also. But I think what what I conceived and maybe what we talked about at the Commission meeting was. Can they be given the empowerment to go off and get creative? You know, research other communities, see what things have worked, what have not, get creative, maybe come up with a box of. Ideas and options to bring back to City Council, get direction on, maybe even do some outreach, working with staff to potential partners. Depending on how that can be done. And they did ask for some legal clarification on. You know. When they get to that point, if there are some options that council likes and we want to move forward, how do you start having conversations with partners and things like that? So if I remember right, maybe someone from the Commission can chime in, but or Hannah, but that's what I was thinking we're looking for tonight. So the concept is that they would come up with ideas, maybe a model or two, bring that back to council and see further direction.
Thanks, Shelley, Charlie.
Yeah, Ellen Dole raised her hand when Shelley commented, I would wouldn't mind hearing she yesterday before I add my comment, it'll be very, mine will be very brief.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that, go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you, yes, Shelley was just referring to the fact that I had asked for some legal guidance on, you know, I'm. I used to work for HUD as an attorney, so I'm always looking for those legal parameters. And I wanted to be able to find out what are the rules with allowing us to reach out to other partners of a nonprofit nature or a for-profit nature? What what would commit the city improperly? You know, are there any rules or things that need to guide us as we move forward? And wanted to be able to seek the city's attorney's advice on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl, I am a bad person to offer legal advice. We see you. But we cannot hear you. I think he said, just go ahead, Ellen. Now we can hear you, Carl.
Yeah, I, let me try to figure out the mic.
No, you're fine, we can hear you.
Now you can hear me, okay.
Yeah.
What I said is I didn't hear, I didn't hear the question because I was typing an email to Alan Marlero on the water system. I apologize for that, so Ellen, if you don't mind repeating it, I'm happy to answer, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem, we had just wanted to know as we're moving forward to identify projects and things of that sort. If we wanted to reach out to like a nonprofit partner, for example, Habitat, some other developer, what are the parameters that we have to follow? In that, in doing that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that in in terms of having just kind of more generalized discussions about. Other projects I've been involved in, like I could see having a conversation with Habitat, you know, they had a pretty successful project partnering with the school district. And Eagle Eagle or or Picken County up at next to the Basalt High School. I I think those general discussions are fine, I think what you can't do is really make any commitments on behalf of the city with regard to. Funding or project or densities or things like that, but I I don't see any problem with having kind of general conversations about what the, you know, what are some possibilities? And how how those partnerships could potentially work together.
All right, so if we wanted to, for example, approach the hospital and see what the hospital's plans are with respect to housing and what they might be interested in. Habitat, some of the practices that they've done, what's worked for them, what's not worked for them, those kinds of. Even in CMC, talking with Sean and what CMC is looking for, things of that sort, that's okay.
Absolutely, I'm just recognizing that other than City Council's, you know, seated as council at a public meeting with an agenda item, we can't make any commitments to anything.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Otherwise, I think a lot of flexibility is, and and it's important to explore those partnerships, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I think, you know, looking for direction other than just think be big and be aggressive, I think, you know, we do have. People that are working regionally on this, you know, we had that study done where about a year and a half ago, they said we're two thousand units short in Glenwood Springs from stasis or or whatever. You know, and since that time, I think we've either approved or actually added about five hundred units. Now, they're all, as Shelley mentioned, one, two bedroom and studios rentals. So, you know, that helps a lot, you know, when you talk about workforce housing and and yes, they're luxury and they're not affordable. But at some point, supply is going to help with with the demand. That's just how it's going to work and no matter how nice they are. But we really are needing to figure out this missing middle housing, you know, that that I think is the biggest part of this community that that is identified. The townhomes, the patio homes, the fourplexes, the, you know, kind of the higher density yet. Livability where people can get in at a, you know, it's silly to say, but at a reasonable price of four to five hundred thousand dollars. And and I think that that is, that's something as far as direction. You know, we had a a proposal before, I think, the previous council. It was a duplex in an area, and it was literally like fifty feet away from the correct zoning. It was Marco Diem's project, if folks can remember that on Blake Avenue. And, you know, the only reason we we shot it down, I mean, he asked for a variance and and the only reason shot down is it wasn't in the code. And it was a duplex with two ADUs. And, you know, I think those are the kind of things that we all sat around, or a lot of us sat around and said, boy, we just can't. Maybe it was as council, I can't remember, but we sat around and we all kind of said, gosh, I wish we could, but the code doesn't allow. Let's talk about the code, you know, let's talk about height, let's talk about number of units, let's. Bring us those things as well as regional partnerships, I think that helps define the conversation. Ask us to allocate a half million dollars a year for this, ask us to work with other communities. That, I think, is more of our role than identifying individual properties and and trying to eke out one or two units. I think that'll really move the needle, that's, I don't know if that's helpful in direction or not, but that's the direction I guess I would give. Hannah and then Deborah.
Thanks, Mayor, I did just want to bring back up a topic that was mentioned by Ellen and Shelley. That the Housing Commission is wanting to see if council has specific direction on an AMI that we're looking at for a possible project. And obviously, that will change depending on, you know, the partnerships that that we research. But, you know, the city does have the rental program where we cap it at a hundred percent AMI, and this is for rent. But is there any thoughts or direction on, and this really gets to the affordability piece, do we want this at a hundred percent AMI? Or is there a desire to go lower? Because that that really will also set some of the parameters of who we talk to. Thank you.
Good question. Deborah, go ahead.
I was gonna suggest maybe because you guys are not exactly perfectly on the same page. That if, you know, we really need to give direction, that it gets on our agenda and there is a vote. So it could even be the next agenda, and I also want everyone to bear in mind that Hannah is our affordable housing expert. And she's also our emergency PIO. So patience will be important for this. This is wonderful as Hannah is, she's not actually two people, yet, we're working on clones.
And and I guess I would say before we put something on the next agenda or a future agenda at some point. To have this exact same conversation, I would like to see our our commissions, our planning and zoning and Housing Commission reconvening. Together and bring us ideas and have something before us so we can have have something to talk about, to discuss, to say that's too much, that's too little. But right now, it's just the seven of us kind of trying to throw ideas at our experts, which are housing and and also P and Z. And so that that's what I would rather have, but Charlie, you have your hand up, and then Shelley's next.
Yeah, so my comment is going to be for Jonathan, you've got to pick up on exactly what I was thinking, I mean, I think the idea of what can we do in our general zoning code to try to encourage. Infill or other types of things, I think is important, I don't think that's the question that was brought to us tonight. The question was, would we support one of these small projects? And I guess my vote, and I think I hear other people's vote, and I don't know whether we need a formal vote at a meeting, is, yeah, I think of the right project with the right cost, we can do it. We can't start setting aside money, Mr. Mayor, on a annual basis, unless you have an idea of what it might cost us to do. And my thought is what the Housing Commission was saying to us is, give us a go-ahead, we'll try to give you some numbers like that, and we can start looking at that. So and I agree with you, I think getting the P and Z involved in those things you just suggested. Shelley's idea that we're looking for purchase housing that's that's affordable rather than more rental housing, in my mind, is 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 something we should be looking at trying to support in in in. I think, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie, Shelley, go ahead.
And I don't know what the recommendation will be, speaking to Charlie is. You know, from the Commission, I would leave that up to them, is whether we end up at rental or or for purchase. But I think at this point, speaking to Deborah's point, I guess, I think it's maybe early for a vote. Because we don't really have anything to vote on, except that, you know, if we have general consensus that, yeah, this concept sounds good as a demonstration project. The whole point of this project is to demonstrate kind of what we can do, how creative we can get, what kind of partnerships are out there. So I think if we if we can give that direction to the council tonight, does one, do these properties look good? Do we prefer one over the other? Give them a go-ahead on these and then to come back with some concepts of this is what might it might look like. At that point, we might be ready for a vote, but just my my two cents.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we're looking specifically at these two properties, you know, my preference is the the Idings property is already in a, it's right next to residential. It's right across from some pretty high density, some pretty ideal in with Cardiff Glen. The other H Street property, gosh, you know, if at some point H Street Crossing gets redeveloped. That really is kind of a nice commercial connection. I I would hate to, you know, commit that to residential and take up something that that, you know, might be a very nice retail, commercial connection to the Meadows. So that's just in a nutshell where where my priorities would be in relation to those two projects. Other questions, concerns, thoughts?
Paula. Yeah, I would, I would also push to give this Commission the opportunity to start exploring. They aren't coming back, setting up the program and telling us exactly how it's going to run, they're just giving us ideas on how we could move forward and. I, as I said earlier, I think that's a potential for a possible bigger bigger project when we look at something like. What might happen with Voglar or what might happen with the Confluence area? And and I have, we have, we have our feet wet, we'll know what we're looking at when we're talking to a developer or a partner. So I'd like to see them have some flexibility here to move forward and explore what the potential is.
Thanks, Paul. I know I made a lot of comments, I'll make one more, you know, Charlie, to your point of not budgeting for this. I think it's very imperative that we have a plan that we and the committee buy into, that is, that sustains past this council or. or future leadership. You know, we had an affordable housing program, deed restricted affordable housing two and a half years ago. That was done away with, with the previous council. The issue was, just for history, one of the people in there needed a roof replaced or something, didn't have the money, couldn't take out a home equity loan apparently. And so that council at that time elected to just scrap the whole program and give that deed restriction, take it off those units and, and yes, it's only six units, but it was something. And I bet those six units came about during some period of growth and we required that from the developers to set aside X percent. I don't exactly know the history. I bet Carl probably could talk about it more, but I don't know if it's real important. But the point is, is that's kind of like a one-off thing that one council did, it did not sustain. And then five or six years later, it was just removed and now we have none. And I would hate to start and do something like that so that we could eke out 14 units. We have, you know, 14 units here without a long-term sustainable thoughtful approach. And, you know, budgeting is planning and I don't know, it didn't have to be budget, but otherwise we're just going to get hit with this, these opportunities. Hey, we have a parcel to develop and now all of a sudden we have to take money away from another priority to do it because we did not budget for it. So I guess if this is something we really want to explore, that we take out money in our 2021 budget to explore that. But I, I, otherwise I feel like this is kind of get, coming out of left field and then we're going to have to short some other fund or some other priority in the city. I don't know if that's something that is a sustainable way of dealing with, with this obviously long-term generational problem. Shelley?
I was just going to chime in that I guess I would, I, I'm in favor of either property, what they have. I think the Ittings might work a little bit better and be a little less encumbered than Eighth and Midland or less complicated. The traffic's not as high down there. So just my two cents. I don't know if we want to give that specific direction or how the rest of council feels on those two properties.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I've heard seven different approaches from council. And I think the reason why Deborah was asking for some kind of a motion and a vote was really on the direction so that it was clear what was being asked of us. Cause I, obviously lots of priorities right at the moment. Hopefully those will settle over time, but we really don't want to be burning a lot of, even just internal resources on, on going in the wrong direction because of what we think we heard. So I'd really appreciate, as you wrap this up, if you could package it in such a way that we have a clear understanding what council would like to see from us.
That's asking a whole lot, Carl. Tony, I'd love to hear from you.
Um, I would object to what Shelley is asking for, that this meeting was not noticed for that. I, on any specific project, Hannah was very clear with the newspaper that this is totally informational, that neighbors shouldn't go upset. So if you're going to take a vote or something, I would object to any specific project. As far as a guideline, you know where I stand. Until the infrastructure issues are addressed, we are full and I, no vacancy. That's my position for now. That could change, but that's where I am. So the housing authority is clear. It's not personal. I just don't think that that is some, that should be our focus right now. We have too many other large issues, including I would like to see, and when we talk about infrastructure, looking at Cottonwood Pass and paving it and other access to this community before we put thousands of more people here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Does somebody want to try to give the general direction to our housing commission? If not, then yeah, we probably do need to bring it back on the dais and then have a vote of that direction. But go, go ahead, councilor Boies. If you could unmute yourself, that'd be great, Rick.
So, you know, I would propose that we look at the Ittings property, that we limit or set a cap on the AMI to 80% would be our target population. And that we go forward with expending no city money in lieu of a partnership where we would somehow dedicate the land to get something moving. I mean, and that's just a proposal to get us off a dime. I know that, you know, at the discretion of council, whether we want to vote on this now or bring it back at a more noticed time. But notice, I'm not talking about spending any money. I'm not talking about doing anything revolutionary here other than exploring and giving the staff some direction in looking at the project. Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, I guess my view is a little different from Rick's. I not necessarily opposed to the things that Rick just said, but I do, I tend to agree with Tony and that's my thing. Much as I don't want to add another agenda item, I think, you know, staff should come back with a kind of a recommended motion or something they think based on our conversation to summarize this and let's bring it before the council at the September 13 meeting.
We can try.
Or the next one. I don't, I, I.
Try to provide you some summary of what you discussed here today.
Sorry, I didn't understand what you're trying, but I do.
I was just, I, I mean, we can do that, but I do think, I, I guess my recommendation from a staff perspective would be, we, we'd rather see that discussion and a motion on the dais, especially if we're going to be that specific about where we're going to be spending our time. And I think that's probably fair to, to the neighborhoods as well.
Maybe in the memo, you guys could just give us the bullet points and then we, we can, we can forward from there. That, that's kind of what I'm looking for, Carl.
Okay.
All right. Shelley, then Paula.
I guess I have a quick question for maybe the commission. Um, if, if anyone would want to answer that. Are you looking for, as far as project development, since we're conceptual at this point, would it be better to specify one of these two properties or would it be better for the commission to move forward? Kind of looking at both of them and then bring concept, conceptual ideas back to council? Can anybody speak to that?
Erin, really?
So I think with that, are we, are we looking to do rental properties on these? Or are we looking to look into both rental and affordable to buy? Cause that kind of.
Yeah, I think that's to be determined, yeah.
I think that depends on like the property, you know, stating one property over the other. Cause one property, the one on Eighth is going to be better for, better for rentals. And the Ittings property, property may be better for like Habitat.
Ah, okay.
Paula?
So I'm, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm asking the commission also for clarity. My sense was they were coming forward saying there are these potential properties that we could work with. They wanted some direction on pursuing possible partnerships or ideas on how to develop these pieces. So what Rick is proposing, if I'm understanding correctly, is directing staff to start looking into this. And so I'd like clarity from, I guess, you know, if, if one of the commissioners, housing commissioners can just say, are we looking at putting this in staff hands or is this something that you guys are willing to take on and, and do some pre-exploration before staff gets involved? Does that, is that? Makes sense? And Carl and Deborah, does that make sense to you? We're not really looking at staff input at this point, other than the guidance that Hannah's been giving us, but more along the lines of exploring potential partnerships and developers, in development, sorry. So can somebody address that on the housing commission?
Selen, um, I, is it all right for me to go ahead?
Yes, yeah, please.
Um, I mean, I think for me personally, I was hoping to be working with the staff with their expertise and their time and not be just doing this on our own. I think they've got great expertise that we would want to be able to work with them in talking about ideas. I think one of the, to follow up on what Erin was saying, I think one of the reasons that we had liked the Eighth and Midland for one was because it was so close to town and public transportation. You know, that was an important issue. And the other property on Midland is very, and Ittings is a very good site, but it doesn't have the public transportation access that the other site does. And so that's, you know, that's the question about where, where was the, the council wanting us or interested in, in developing housing with, you know, the duplex issues could be both rental as well as ownership. But those locations did have some pros and cons to them.
So, yeah, I, I don't even think we're, we're hearing general direction and even to get it on the next agenda. Uh, I, or a future agenda, excuse me. I guess I would like to see another housing, a joint housing P and Z commission meeting or two to come back to us with recommendations to have a starting point for a conversation. That, because I think P and Z is integral in this when we talk about, you know, do we have incentives? Or, you know, you know, a 10% restriction on large developments that they have to dedicate X percent to affordable housing or a fee in lieu of, we, we don't really have that right now. And so all, all these ideas are kind of, kind of swirling out there and I don't know that the seven of us have, have the expertise to be opining on them. But I think our P and Z and our housing commission does. And that's why I'm just a little hesitant to get in front of them and be giving them, it's, it's chicken or the egg. You know, we're going to give, they want direction from us, but they're the experts. So I would love for them to have, have a few meetings and, and come back to us. But that, that's just my direction that I would have and I don't know if other people share that or not. Hannah?
Thanks. Um, just, I know we're running out of time here and I wanted to clarify where we landed as far as bringing it back for you guys to give housing commission direction to move forward. I know there's so many conversations that we can have and bringing back conversations with planning and zoning. But as far as kind of letting housing commission loose to go big, as you say, in bringing back some ideas, that's still the direction that you're seeing, Jonathan, Mr. Mayor?
I, I would look for hands up or thumbs up if, if other people support that general direction from our housing and P and Z.
Yep.
And then my comment to that is, and to Ellen, obviously as the staff liaison, I would be looking to bring that back to our housing commission. And I think they are extremely knowledgeable and prepped with a little bit of direction from staff to go out and explore some of these ideas. And Deborah, thank you. I'm not two people, but hopefully things calm down a little bit. And I think that I can work with the housing commission to utilize those resources efficiently to bring something back that you guys can actually vote on or, or also get those additional meetings that, with planning and zoning commission that both of those commissions have been asking for.
Good with that approach if, if majority of council is.
I thought some thumbs up from Paula, head nod from Rick, thumbs up from Charlie. I can't tell it because of Tony's background, if that's a thumbs up or thumbs down, because his thumb kind of got lost in the background. So it looks like a majority of council have.
I made my position clear. No.
Okay. So majority of council has, I think, given some, some relatively clear-ish direction on where we want to go. So I guess bring it back at a future meeting. And I, I will, we'll try to have this again. Any other comments from either the housing commission? Thank you guys so much. You guys put in a lot of hours' time. You are the founding members of this commission. It's a definitely a goal and a priority of the city to, to move this forward. We place a high value on, on the time that you're putting in. So thank you very, very much. It's easy to get focused on a lot of other, you know, literally putting out fires right now. But I think moving these conversations forward is important. Anything else from council?
I want to add thanks as well, Mr. Mayor. I think you're doing an awesome job, so.
All right. All right, guys. We'll be back here in, let's shoot for 6:05 back on. So full 30 minutes from now, we will jump back on for our regular meeting.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.